In order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thanks for coming, everybody. It's February 1st, and I saw people running around with their t-shirts on. And we determined there is no frost in the ground today.
Really?
Yes, we were, well, doing some digging over in the park and everything, no frost.
Unbelievable.
Yep. Uh, roll call, please.
Karen Straffan?
Here.
Tom Feder?
Here.
Tom Kruger?
Here.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine here, John Horvath?
Here.
Joanne Shirkey?
Here.
Okay, all counted for, present. Uh, we have bills payable, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the bills payable, the amount of ninety-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-two cents.
Support? Okay, we have motion, and Karen supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Tom Feder?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes, John Horvath?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Hey, motion carries. We have any public comments relating to any business on our agenda? Any public comments? No public comments. Sit down. Moving right along, we have the consent agenda. Agenda. What did I say?
Agenda.
I had dental work and I'm still numb, so my tang's tongue-lin or tongue's stink-lin.
That's a good excuse.
Yeah, right.
Did you have brain surgery?
I should, I should.
If nobody wants it, I'll read it, consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of minutes to the board meeting of January eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen, and synopsis, reports, the check report, the fire department report, uh, for December two thousand and fifteen, the water department, uh, report for December and two thousand and fifteen, the whole year, I guess. Notice, Phil Pavlov, legislative update, a communication from the ABPS, Alan Codett, and Karen Straffan, and request, no requests.
Okay, we have motion, any support?
Support.
Okay, thank you, we got motion and support, uh, does anyone want anything pulled out, or? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone against, motion carries. Next, for the supervisor's report. We'll try to get through this one. Uh, water, um, everyone's been concerned about, uh, lead in the water, the problem that they're having up in Flint, and, uh, issues there, and we got a lot of, um, people concerned, rightly so. We don't have any lead in our water, nor do we have any lead lines, pipes, in our township. Basically, what happened there, in a nutshell, uh, when they're using Detroit water, Detroit puts phosphates into their water, and what that does, that makes a micro membrane, it coats all the pipes, and, um, uh, and so the, it doesn't allow any lead or copper, or any of the chemicals from the pipe leach into the water. When it went to Flint, what happened, that water there is a lot more corrosive, because it's got a high pH, and, uh, then, you know, they have to treat it certain ways so he can drink it, and, like I say, it becomes corrosive, they didn't add the phosphates, and after a couple, three months, it took that membrane out of the, out of the lead pipes, and then soon after that, lead started leaking in the water. Our water here is, um, not corrosive at all, it's pH balanced, you can't get any better. I do have, uh, did you put it up yet, I was going to tomorrow, the, the water quality?
From fourteen, fifteen will be out in a couple weeks.
Right, we, we do have the water quality report from two thousand and fourteen on our website, uh, in two weeks, we'll have it back from two thousand and fifteen, but, uh, I put it out on social media and everything, if anyone even would like a tour of our water plant, um, to see exactly what we're doing, and we, we have a lot of monitoring systems, real time there, uh, checks for different contaminants in the water that we're intaking, uh, it checks our pH levels, and, and we have safe water, so, um, I have a, your, our, I have a meeting scheduled for February twenty-fourth at 1:00 PM to review the, up at the county roads office, to review what we're looking at for, uh, it's not the tour, but, uh, how much money we get in road sharing and that type of thing for our roads for this coming year, and I'm sure we'll be talking about the bridge replacement on Merrill Street, um, and other projects we have. Russell, uh, and, and actually, a lot of people on social media were, were voicing this, we're looking at the possibility of establishing a temporary kennel at the police station, uh, now, it would be after the, the addition is done, and we actually have a gentleman who's going for his eagle ba- eagle badge for the Boy Scout, wants to take it on as a project, and, uh, I know Chesterfield has one, and does New Baltimore, New Baltimore does too, we're kind of getting ideas, see if it's possible we can do that, and, and hopefully, we can make that happen. So we are definitely looking into that, and I, uh, I hope we can, uh, work with this gentleman so he can obtain his eagle badge, it would be a good project. Uh, let's see, just last Thursday, we hosted a SEMCOG invasive Species meeting here, and we had about thirty-plus people. Found out today, time to do the happy dance, the St. Clair County, uh, it's called the MISGP, it's, uh, it's called the SISMA, it's basically, we, Clay Township is through SEMCOG, teamed with other communities in, um, mostly Clay, and, uh, some, uh, communities in Macomb County, Clinton River area, and, and it's basically all Anchor Bay, but we received our state grant for invasive species control for next year, um, well, no, I shouldn't say that, they're gonna announce it February eleventh. We have a really good chance of getting it.
Got the cart before the horse?
No, 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 we have a very, very good chance getting it, and with that grant, we're gonna hire a coordinator, and, uh, so that's a good thing, and, uh, there'll be more on that in the next, uh, after February eleventh. Unless you've been under a rock, uh, you should know that Detroit Bridge Company filed for a permit with the DEQ to build a bridge to Harson's Island, and, uh, we have a public hearing scheduled at the auditorium at the Algonquin, uh-
Elementary.
Elementary school, I keep on calling junior high, March ninth, at seven o'clock, and, uh, I know a lot of people are in Florida and this and that, or can't make it, I'm gonna have it videotaped, the school's gonna videotape it for us, and I will put it on YouTube, and, um, also, they, they extend the, the period where you can write in for your public comments till ten days after that, so you'll have it till March nineteenth, so if you, if you're not around or aren't available, you'll be able to watch the, watch the meeting on YouTube and then write a letter to the DEQ.
Artie?
Yes?
Can you make sure you tell them that it's not Clay Township's meeting, per se?
It's not Clay Township's meeting, it is the DEQ meeting. We requested it from them, I sent them a formal letter requesting, because they were just gonna do public comments for twenty days and close it, and there was a lot of, uh, people calling us here, and, and myself, and emailing, that, uh, I mean, it's a pretty large job, and they, they needed to have a public hearing so everyone can get better informed on what they're trying to do and voice concern, so, yeah, it's not a, a town, or a township meeting, but, uh, um, rather, DEQ, and, uh, they filed the permit with the DEQ, and that's why, you know, it depends, it's a function, when they file it, as to when they have the public hearing, and, and everyone said, well, why don't we do it in the summer, well, they didn't put, file the permit in the summer. Okay, uh, we're, started today, uh, doing the electric, electrical in the park, expanding, uh, the expansion of electrical and, uh, the, um, the streetlights, not streetlights, but the walking path lights, that's why I say they're over there today doing their, uh, their borings underground, and there was zero frost, so, and then also, the police station's addition is going full swing, uh, they just poured the footings today, most of them, they got a little bit to do tomorrow, but, uh, they're, they're rocking and rolling on that, too, so, that's a daily thing. And then, um, February ninth, what's that, next Wednesday, Tuesday, we're, uh, we got a kickoff meeting for the dispatch council upgrade, uh, so we're gonna get that project on its way, too, and, uh, so we're gonna be busy with all those three things.
What time is that?
It is at ten o'clock, I believe. Is it the tenth? Yes, I thought it was a Wednesday, okay, we didn't know when, uh, when I typed this out last Thursday. And I mentioned before, I'm doing research for a grant for the DDAs for a new business incubator within our district, where if a new business moves in, they'd be eligible for up to two thousand dollars of money to help them get their business kicked off and going, I'm also going to, uh, see if I can get the community foundation to do a matching grant for that, and if I'm successful with that, it would be four thousand dollars for the new business, and I know, I've been in that boat before, I mean, you're, you're opening up a new business, you're, you're pretty well strapped, and it will help for rent and inventory and, and, you know, hopefully, get it off the ground, so, I'm excited that, and I mentioned also before, we have the St. John's Marsh project is funded, we got a kickoff meeting on that, and it's not till May, but, uh, it's basically funded through the DNR, Ducks Unlimited, Waterfalls USA, we did pledge for ten thousand dollars in that, um, for that project, it's a little over a two million dollar project, and it's gonna be pretty exciting, uh, they're gonna be doing a lot of dredging, diking, uh, it's gonna involve a couple boat ramps, more parking, and they'll be able to regulate the water levels through the, the marsh, this is on the inside, or I should say, the east side of the dike road, not the, not the other side, but, uh, that's a great project. Wanted to mention, too, uh, they're taking, they're signing up, um, Anchor Bay Power Squadron for a basic safe boating course, uh, the course will be taught over four or five weeks, Monday evenings at seven o'clock, beginning February eighth. And if you're interested, well, it's John, uh, you give me a call, and I'll, I'll forward you the flyer and the information, or send me an email, supervisor@claytownship.org, or G, or if you want to email anchorbayspspowersquadron@yahoo.com, um, but if you're interested in a safe coating, boating class, that's the thing to do. Second Annual Winter Fest at the Clay Township Park, February nineteenth to the twenty-first, and, uh, we're getting down to the nitty-gritty on that, signs are up now, advertising it, it's gonna be fun, it's gonna be expanded from last year, uh, some of the things are ice, kids' ice fishing contests, uh, there's gonna be a chili cook-off, uh, horseshoes, bands and DJs at night-
Figure skating.
Figure skating, um-
Wrestling.
Wrestling, it's not WWE. And we have a circus coming.
Um, I was also, if I may, I was just, uh, the Lions Club was just recently contacted by a young lady named Sasha Nash from, from, uh, the high school, and, uh, she is interested in doing a fundraiser, a pancake breakfast for the Elgin Act Choir, so, we are, uh, getting the ball rolling, and it's prob- it will be Saturday morning from eight to eleven-thirty AM-
Okay, good.
In the tent at Winter Fest, so, we're still working out the details of it, and, uh-
So they can stoke the fire up to get the heat going.
People, people can come early in the morning, have a nice pancake breakfast, and move right, take the family and move right through the events of the day.
Awesome. Okay, that's all I have, thank you much. We don't have anything under unfinished business, we do not have, uh, new business. Uh, we have the police department, two thousand and sixteen, police executive and new chief school, and Mr. Coach and Kula Gowski put in a request for, and it's gonna come out of line item two, two oh seven, zero zero zero, nine six zero, dot zero zero. Wanna come up, Mike, and? Do we have a new chief?
I think so.
Yeah, good.
Um, basically, what this class is, it entails, um, basically, everything that, that we're gonna do in as an administrative role for the department, everything from, um, scheduling, um, as far as budgeting, as far as dealing with the media, anything that's gonna go with what our position entails, um, it's a one-week course, which they touch on all these issues, they do offer, you know, other classes that go off through several months, this kind of condenses it down into a one-week course, basically bringing all the fundamentals together that are really the nuts and bolts of it, into a one-week portion instead of over several months, um, that's kind of what we're looking at, that's why we'd like to go through this course, so that it's not pulling us away from here so many times, this is a course that's, uh, you know, highly recommended by, um, MCOS and MACP as well, so, I think it's something that's definitely gonna be beneficial to both us and to the department.
Where, where is this class at?
It's in Okemos.
Oh, okay. And you guys stay-
By Lansing.
Okay, and you, I see in here, 'cause I was figuring out the things, you stay in the same room?
Yes, unfortunately.
So both, both of you-
Too bad, Mike.
Both of you will be there together, right?
Yes.
Will there be anyone here?
In charge?
Yes, already got that handled, um, uh, with Sergeant Yingle, he knows that he will be here, he will be on call if anything goes down, um, and we've got others in place as well, so, we should be okay.
So it's not a free-for-all while you're gone?
Uh, no.
I'll make a motion that we approve, um, Chief Coach and Lieutenant Kula Gowski to attend the Police Executives and New Chiefs School in Okemos, um, for a total cost of two thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars.
Support.
Okay, motion, support, any more-
Just do that in your head?
Yeah.
Any more discussion?
My calculator.
Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Okay, next, we got to, uh- Uh, certificate of appreciation for Officer Spansky?
Yes. Tommy, why don't you come on up? Tommy has been a reserve officer with Clay Township Police Department since nineteen ninety, uh, what we'd like to do today is recognize him for the twenty-five years of dedicated service, uh, Tommy has been one of our most active reserves in the program ever since, and keeps going strong, and I think it's just, uh, something that's definitely, uh, fitting, that we recognize those years of service, and hopefully, he can give us, uh, several more, so, with that being said-
Tom, congratulations to be in here and serving, uh, our reserve program for such a long time, you're doing a great job.
Thank you, thank you very much, sir, absolutely appreciate your service.
I like your cross there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Red rumble, I repeat. Yesterday, you accepted my Facebook friend. I'd just like to thank the township of Clay and the police department, the twenty-five years here certainly enhanced my life, uh, it's made a lot of people in my family proud.
Squeeze over, squeeze over.
Gotcha. Thank you, sir.
Can you send that to me, Tom?
Yep.
Thank you.
It's, uh, it's made a lot of people in my family proud, especially my ninety-two-year-old mom, she's still probably-
Oh, wow, how nice is that?
A lot of wonderful experiences, I'd like to think I contributed, and I certainly worked with probably the finest men and women that the profession has to offer, so, thank you all very, very much, and I'm very proud of it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe we'll get another twenty-five years out of you, huh? All right. Moving right along, I, uh, we didn't have too much time consuming items on this agenda, so I threw this out, I, I wanted to know if, if you guys wanted to relook at our mission statement and our vision statement and our goals, um, I'm gonna read them real quick for everybody. It, it's funny, too, when I was at, uh, the MTA training this week, or last couple weeks ago now, um, they, they asked Larry Merrill, the executive, we, we were in a breakout session, uh, there's probably like forty people in it, and they, they asked, well, how many townships have mission statements and vision statements, and only about four people raised their hands, which really surprised me, and, uh, he brought ours up, and he, he liked, you know, I, 'cause he asked, and I brought it up on the phone, and he liked them, but, and our mission statement, "We protect, preserve, promote, and improve the quality of life in our community by providing leadership and services reflecting pride, values, and vision of Clay Township." And then the missions, or the vision statement, "Protect and encourage the environmental, economic, historical, resident, and residential character of our community while creating a destination full of recreational opportunities." And we did list some goals, too, ten goals, uh, one, protect people and property, two, maintain and enhance the township's infrastructure, preserve and enhance the quality of life, uh, number four is protect and enhance the natural environment, five, improve the economic vitality and develop opportunities, six, provide efficient, effective, and essential support services by pursuing partnerships with other organizations, seven, influence regional and state issues and decisions, eight, encourage community involvement through boards, commissions, committees, stewardship programs, and volunteerism, nine, preserve, enhance, and celebrate the historical elements of Clay Township, and ten, provide diverse, active, passive, and social recreational opportunities," and that was, uh, adopted February nineteenth of two thousand and thirteen, so I, I wrote some basic notes and, and asked the board some questions, and, uh, I mean, do you guys think, I mean, are, are, is everybody happy with, with the, the statement so far, the mission statement, the vision statement? I think I am, too, but, what I wanna do is get a nice, have them posted in, in here somewhere with a nice sign, um, and then, uh-
We talked about that two years ago, Artie.
I know it, hey, we've been busy. And, uh, you know, then I, I listed, you know, a few things that I thought we've done as far as all our goals, and, uh, I just wanna ask the board, you know, what, where do you see us going in the future, and basically, you know, what threats do you think we have to face, and I just put it bluntly, what keeps you awake at night? So I, you know, if you can tell me later, if you guys want, if you have anything, or if you wanna talk about it now, that's fine, too, so I just thought we'd throw it out, and if you guys wanna have a discussion, and, uh-
Did you wanna read the words in red?
No, I'm, go, you, you go ahead, I got a headache, I got my teeth, if you wanna read them.
Okay, so, uh, as far as, number one, protect people and property, we have more boots on the ground for both police and fire, we have upgraded equipment for both forces, we've put internal controls in place to protect the taxpayers from ourselves, uh, number two, maintain and enhance the township's infrastructure, the water department has been doing a great job, their budget is looking better, we have maintenance funds for our water tank and twenty-year asset, asset replacement schedule for the water plant, we need to replace the water main going from Nook Road to Ligas, uh, let's see, I think we should do it in two thousand and nineteen after we retire the water plant, up, upgrade debt, do you want me to read all this?
If you want.
All right. Preserve and enhance quality of life, we've added music in the park, farmer's market, teamed up with the Pearl Beach Lions for Winter Fest, uh, sturgeons for tomorrow and the sturgeon, sturgeon tournament, upgraded the log cabin and the area around it, four, protect and enhance the natural environment, partnered, partnered with GLRI and sturgeon, and the sturgeon reef, the Crispin Drain Project, working with the DNR and St. John's Marsh Project, which is now funded, uh, started curbside recycling, and we also have the Frag Whitey's Advisory Board.
That we just got a grant for.
Right. Five, improve economic vitality and development opportunities, the Downtown Development Authority's facade grant, and possible new incubator grants for new startup businesses, sponsoring events in, in the township, uh, number six, provide efficient, effective, and essential support services by pursuing partnerships with other organizations, uh, IRA Township Police, uh, tower, tower truck purchase, mutual aid agreements, partnerships with Elgin Act Schools, Pearl Beach Lions, and the Elgin Act Rotary, influence regional and state issues and decisions, active in SEMCOG, the southeastern Michigan Council of Governments-
Right.
Uh, we're very vocal with Congress, state and county representative on issues, uh, we host meetings, uh, we also have good relationship, relationships with local papers and press, uh, number eight, encourage community involvement through boards, commissions, committees, stewardship programs, and volunteerism, all boards are full, sponsor local ser- and we also sponsor local service groups, uh, number nine, preserve, enhance, and celebrate the historic elements of Clay Township, we work hand in hand with the Elgin Act Clay Historical Society and sponsor and support their events, number ten, provide diverse, active, passive, and social recreational opportunities, we have the ORV and golf cart ordinances, we sponsor events such, such as music in the park, farmer's market, winter fest, sturgeon tournament, uh, rebuilt the Pearl Beach fishing pier, phase one, uh, we also have ice skating in the park, and we're also expanding the electrical in the park, so, thank you, Tom. You're welcome.
Those are kind of like my notes I threw in there, but, uh, uh, I don't know, you know, it's like, I haven't read those in quite a while, and I thought, when I went back, I thought, we've been doing pretty good.
We did a lot of stuff, you did a lot of stuff.
Yeah, I think the one that we are, we can, is maybe eight, you know, encourage community involvement and boards, commissions, and, you know, stewardships and volunteerism, I'd like to get that fired up, but like I, I said, I just wanted to have this discussion, 'cause, you know, I think we're doing pretty good, but, pretty good is the enemy of excellence, and I'd like to see us do an excellent job versus a good job, so there's always room for improvement, so.
Yeah, I agree with you on that number eight, too, like, um, we can always use, um, in the election commission, more volunteers, and kind of put a big push out for that, because that's always a problem, and, uh, even, you know, get a big push towards some, getting people to be involved in that, I agree with that very much.
Okay. So anyhow, if anyone has any thoughts you wanna talk to me later about, too, that's great, and, uh, I just wanted to take a quick look and see if you guys agree with the direction we're going, and, uh, for, if we have to make any changes, so, please let me know. Uh, chapter eight, policy matters, we got that in our packet, that's the last chapter, Cheryl, Cindy, where'd that come from?
I'm across the Shirkey.
Yeah, Cindy, and Joanne, and myself, and going through it, what are we, chapter three or four now, as far as finalizing it?
We'll be going on chapter four this week.
But, uh, this is about township property policies, it concerns it, so.
And Cindy put this, the total chapter in for you to make it a little easier to, 'cause this is-
I appreciate the Cliff Notes.
Yes.
The highlighted Cliff Notes.
Yeah.
If I may, one of the things that, uh, eight point one of chapter eight, identifying township assets, um, we have talked about in the past, uh, getting an asset management program, um, we've even talked about possibly getting help, uh, interns maybe to help us do it, um, I know the soft, software isn't really that expen- isn't that expensive, we would need, uh, maybe one or two scanners and-
Couple label printers-
Right.
And scanners and-
Right.
And scanners and then the software.
I think that, you know, if we were to start it, a lot of, a lot of it would be on the department heads to take care of this.
Yeah.
And, but it's, I think it's better to start sooner than later.
Maybe we can start.
So we can finish sooner than later.
Right, right. And, you know, a good option if we can partner with the schools or something with stewardship or some type of paid internship or something, you know, that's, that's my, you know.
I mean, I don't, I don't expect our, you know, department heads to sit down for two months and go through this.
Right.
Because I know it would be very time-consuming. But that, that struck me. And, and then there were some other things. When you get down to like 8.8, for emergency repairs, supervisor has authorized a contract for emergency repairs up to a cost of undetermined. But I think that one of, one of the, one of the policies that we have now on this board.
It does have.
The supervisor can contact, I believe, two or three, two trustees in an emergency to make a decision.
Right.
It does have to be an emergency.
Right.
And I believe I've been contacted once in my time here.
Mm-hmm. Was it an emergency?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, this, I mean, yeah, some of the stuff, we already have policies in place for it, but, but.
But, I mean, this is, this is a great guide.
Yeah. It makes you think a lot when you're going through it, too. You know, because, you know, we're all not going to be here forever and you gotta, you gotta, it kind of takes into account the dynamics of the, how the boards can be and, you know, I think it does a good job.
It's a good path forward, right.
Protecting us and this, or actually the citizens, so.
Kind of pulls everything together, puts it in one place. You don't actually have one, one book that kind of covers all of these policies, so you have somewhere to go to look for it.
I mean, just by looking at this chapter, I know some of the stuff we don't have policy on.
Right.
So when we, when we do adopt this, this is, this is.
Right.
And do, like, do we have a fire drill for in here at all? You know, where?
I'm out that door. I don't know about you.
That's what I was going to say. Right over there.
The employees, you know?
Right.
To instruct them which way to go? Things like that.
Well, there are, there's an exit on that side. But there's only, you know, maybe you should run a fire drill, Artie.
Okay.
We'll shut the lights off and tell everybody to get out.
There is every, every week, Thursday at 6 o'clock, there's a fire drill. So, all right, it's all good stuff. Anything else on Policy Matters or anything right now?
No, we're just working right along at it.
Okay. Are we meeting again?
Friday.
Friday? Okay. Breakfast beforehand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, public comments. Do we have any public comments? No public comments. Moving right along, board member comments. Joanne?
Yes, I'm, I'm going to talk for just a couple minutes. I'll stay under the three minutes. I just wanted to say that I attended the Michigan Township Convention downtown in Detroit a couple of weeks ago. It was a privilege and, and it was, it was, I learned an awful lot. There was over 100 educational conferences at your disposal of many different items that pertain to township governing. And they were averaged about an hour and 15 minutes each. I attended six of these sessions over the two-day period that I was there. And because we're working on our township policy manual, I went to three of them that focused on that topic. So, and I brought some things back to Cheryl. I gave some to Cindy. And I think, Artie, you went to, you went to one on doc, well, that's a different one that was documents. And then the three that I went to, understanding your role and everybody else's that deals with our policy manual, and then clarifying township powers, this focused on who should do what, which is, you know, all overlaps. And then township statute recodification. Hopefully this will be taken up by the legislature. And I went to one conference on that by Larry Merrill, and he gave us the lowdown. And then in the December issue, you can read, really read up on it. In here, there's a good article. I think I mentioned that to you before. And so most of the township laws were brought, introduced in like 1835 and had, nothing's been done ever since to speak of. So we got to get out of the 19th century and really get into the 21st century. And three others that I went to were effective planning and zoning decision-making, record management, paper versus electronics. And I think, Artie, you went to that and didn't you go to that? And I brought Cindy something back on that, when, because she.
Well, you got a job.
And we've been, that's been brought up to us at the board on a couple of occasions, so I thought that was important. And then one that I just went, more for personal, person, personal benefit, rethinking your reactions, understanding different styles of communication, I thought would be good to get going and make sure I talk nice. And smile. So that was it. It was really very fulfilling and because we as the township board, especially the trustees, we're in, one of our statutory, our main statutory duty is legislative. And that's what this policy thing's going to be doing, so. I share that with you because I did learn an awful lot by going down to that. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. John?
Other than I went to.
Oh, yeah, it was a good conference.
I only went to four of the classes, but.
You didn't go to the one that teaches you how to smile?
Huh?
You didn't go to the one that teaches you how to smile?
No.
Okay.
They don't do that at people my age. It's against the law.
Okay.
But I went, I went, the two of the classes that I went to were both about fire. The other was about police and then the clerk, so that's all I could. I did, Joanne jumped from class to class. I didn't. I stayed the whole hour.
I did not jump from class to class, no.
Well, you can't, you can't do six of them.
They're only an hour and 15 minutes each. You can get three in a day, which I did. I did go into one and I thought, I don't like this one.
Yeah, because I went to Frag Mities and didn't like it. I mean, I knew more about it than they were talking about.
That's for sure.
But, but don't, don't say I jumped, jumped around and can't do six, because I did do six.
Cindy, got anything? You need election workers?
Sure, the one that told me.
Sure, we're always looking for election workers. I didn't go to the conference. I stayed and held down the fort.
Yes.
And plan on going to a week-long Clerk's Institute upcoming this spring, so instead.
Is that Mackinac?
Yes, one of them. One of the messes.
Okay, Karen?
Yeah, I just want to say something about this whole bridge fiasco. People, social media is just that, social media. If you look at what the people have been commenting and the derogatory things they say about the board, it's not us. Facebook is not official. There is so much misinformation on there. If you've got a question, you either come to the board here or go to the march meeting. You don't sit there and knock everybody what they're saying or what they're not saying. And I just, I mean, people don't even know who are on our board to begin with. So, to me, it's, and they want us to respond. I'm not responding, and I don't think anybody else is. So if you've got a complaint, then come here and see us. And that's it.
Well, we did respond by requesting a public hearing.
Well, that's what I said, but as they were saying, how come shame on us board and terrible things, it's not our meeting. I mean, you did request the public hearing, which, yes, but it's, none of it is us. It's the DEQ. And so when they say shame on the board, I'm not sure what, you know, if they don't know what they're talking about, don't talk.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to congratulate my daughter, Ms. Phoebe, on straight A's.
All right.
My son, William, work harder, son, you're getting there. I'd also, I'd also say, like to say that it's really encouraging to see a lot of positivity coming out of the young kids around here. For example, the young, the young lady who's looking to organize a pancake breakfast, there's, there's a lot of good things being done. The Elginac families come together nicely. I'd also like to, to give a shout out to the Full Metal Muskrat Robotics Team. They've been working very, very hard, day and night, to get to their goal of building a robot that can, that can obtain the objective of the courses, of the course at the first tech, or the first robotics challenge. But they, these, these, when I was their age, I was not that ambitious. I was not that intelligent. These kids now, these kids now, they're amazing. And I, I'd like to say that I, I think we've got a bright future ahead of us, and I hope they're, I hope they're going to take good care of us when we're old, because I think they will. But it's, it's very nice to see.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Tom?
Nope, nothing.
Okay. I'm pretty good, too, so.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Sport.
Okay, all in favor? All right. Thanks for coming, everybody. Have a safe couple of weeks. And Mike?
I told you about that.
Yeah.
Who's in charge of the golf cart?